Okay, we enter our good and welfare portion this evening. Last week, there were some questions, all of which were answered. But there was one specific question that was asked. It was in relation to police arrests and stops on New Year's Eve. The police department on New Year's Eve made eight arrests, and one of those was a DWI. Alright, so I'll remind everyone, you have three minutes of mine throughout the time. If you have questions, we will try and answer them when you finish with your three minutes, or we will try and answer them at the following meeting. Ms. Kathleen O'Leary. Good evening.
Hi. First, I'd like to congratulate Inissa for being our Renaissance woman. She teaches, she goes to city council, and she just published a book.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The two things I'd like to speak about are what we're losing with the Long Beach Medical Center replacement, and also the idea of elective conveyor for Long Beach. The things that we're losing under the new plan are there is no drug treatments there. We are the epicenter for the opioid addiction in this area. We used to have a methadone clinic. South Nassau has no clinic and has no treatment beds. Another thing we're losing is outpatient dialysis for seniors. We're losing inpatient hospital services, which we've done without for six years. We're losing mental health services. All of our people here who are in private practice are overwhelmed by the number of patients they have. And a lot of people are going to South Nassau, but they're bragging about that, but that's only because we have nothing here. We also are losing direct ambulance service for heart attack or stroke. And we're going to have a CT scanning, but no MRI. And if anyone knows about emergency situations, very often, there's a CT scan done first, followed by an MRI. So if you need that, you're going to have to be transported a second time to Oceanside. Thirteen percent of the patients that go to Echo's Joy Hospital over here have to be transported to Oceanside. They, in addition to getting 174 million of our FEMA money, they got 20 million, which they used to rehab the West Wing, which is empty, okay? In addition, they've gotten 20 million from the merger of Mount Sinai. And when we had the little meeting in the library, I told them I knew what their fundraising figure was, and asked them, why don't they do some fundraising to give us a real facility that supports to the 500-year height requirement, or hurricane requirement? So I would like to just remind people that this is what we're looking at, which is really like to launch nothing.
Thank you.
Can't talk about it.
As I said, we're going to follow up with Oceanside, I'm sorry, with South Nassau, and see if they're going to have that night meeting.
I'm sorry.
To see if they're going to have that meeting in the evening. You were able to make the daytime.
Yeah.
So we're waiting to hear if they're going to have it, when it's going to be.
It didn't go well for them. I don't think they're going to rush to do the night side meeting.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Jay Dussel.
I'm going to decline, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dussel. Mr. Roy Lester.
I'm going to decline, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Ms. Liz Trusson.
Ms. Trusson, Long Beach.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. Just a couple of questions as we move forward through 2019. First, I can't help but notice a change in our security. What prompted this? Second, I watched the COA stream, and although I am currently blocked by our city council president, his statement made social media rounds that our questions would be answered at the following meetings. Will this include many of the unanswered questions from the last few years, or will we be starting from scratch? There are a number of questions that were asked at the meeting with no agenda, but that were not answered this evening. With no disrespect to our current public relations head, why was there no visible information about the only day to free city taxes? And to follow up, why aren't there only one day to free our city taxes? Residents have expressed confusion on assessment. Is it possible to have a meeting to explain the assessment can free the process like the county does? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trusson. I see our assessors here. Would you like to speak to the grievance question? Thank you. This is Mr. Ray Plinmar, our tax assessor.
Good evening. Actually, they just said, every means how the state has one day for grievance day where the assessor or the board of assessors do meet with presidents who want to protest their assessment. Grievance period is, and always has been for the past 20-something years, the first Tuesday, third Tuesday of January. About two and a half weeks, just like most other municipalities in the U.S. I meet the representatives all the time, and that with civic associations. So my office is always available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Jay.
Just a quick question for the grievance process. Is Sunday our normal business hours?
Yes.
So there were no heating hours?
Just grievance day, which is right now. I'm actually grievance day right now. Jen is downstairs, in case anything comes up.
Okay.
President Ram, can you just speak to the other question in respect to the change in security?
I'll let the police commissioner respond.
Yes, me, me, I've been getting very unruly, so I was just concerned, and it's the end of the year security.
Thanks.
And Ms. Trusson, we reviewed the questions that were asked in the previous meeting, and all seem to have been answered, including Mr. Verona asked a whole bunch about the audit, that Mr. Tagney, I think that was where the most stuff of the questions were, and Mr. Tagney had to answer all those questions.
Did he answer them specifically to Mr. Verona?
He answered the question that he may have. Mr. James Kirkland.
I'll hand it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. Ms. Allison Blanchett. Good evening.
Allison Blanchett. I'm also blocked from your first webpage.
Please finish your three minutes.
It's a clear violation of my First Amendment rights. There's over a dozen of us that are blocked. I just think you should step down.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sam Pindel.
Good evening, Sam Pindel, Long Beach. I can bring two hats for tonight. First, as the president of Long Beach Professional Firefighters, the one from the U.S. City, and the lifeguard associations negotiating a committal resolution on their contract, to reiterate, the firefighters union is willing to still stick with the city and try to negotiate our contract, which has not been renewed over the last eight years. We look forward to working with you and hope for the best. Second, I'm happy to be small civic. We've been publicizing the January 28 Edwards Boulevard update. We appreciate that session. There's two other things going on that night, including a really good presentation by Long Beach Aware on the dangers of vaping with our teenagers. So we just want to ask and see if there's another night, or nights, that are going to be presented for updates on this Edwards Boulevard revitalization.
Thank you. Do we have any other plans for the additional Edwards meetings? Is this just a one night, right?
And now it's a one night.
Okay. Well, we'll see how the community responds, and if enough folks come, we'll go from there. But you can as well take it, Mr. Pindel, thank you. Michael Delore.
Good evening.
Good evening, council, happy new year. You guys, it's on your book.
Thank you.
I just have five topics. What's the update on the construction design of our lifeguard headquarters? Will it be ready this year? Number two, the water main break or sewer break, it's a pumping situation on Riverside Boulevard. I guess it's north of Hudson Street or Fulton. I'm sure it wasn't in the budget, the effect on the budget, the financial impacts to the taxpayer, and so on. Number three, where are we within the budget this year to six-month bar? Just a brief update, I know I'm not going to get the answers tonight, I expect that, but as far as I understand it, questions asked tonight will be answered at the following meeting.
If we can answer them now, we will.
Okay. City manager status, interviews, how many people have you interviewed? How many meetings have you had to interview potential candidates? Where are you in that process? And do you expect a city manager to be hired before this fiscal year ends? The last question I have is, there was a $5 million grant that Senator Kaminsky had put forth towards the Financial Restructuring Board. I'm sure there's a process that you have to undertake, benchmarks, and so on and so forth. I don't expect an answer tonight, but if you could give me, the taxpayer, where we are, whatever you can disclose, I think it would be appreciated, because that will have an impact on this year's budget, I'm sure. So that's all my questions for tonight, and thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delore. So in regards to the Financial Review Board that Senator Kaminsky assisted us in pointing us in that direction, I believe we're waiting for their recommendations. And then based on their recommendations, you know, they say, we suggest you do this, and if you do, we'll give you $50,000. We suggest you do this, and if you do, we'll give you a million dollars. And depending on which of the recommendations you follow, you receive the grant money. But to my understanding, you haven't received a report yet.
No, we have not received a report. We've been going back and forth, I just said, out weekly for the last month, with the individuals from the FRB. They request information, clarification, we've responded to that. Currently, we have no requests outstanding, and they are, they feel they've completed, filled in all the boxes as Mr. Allison, and they will start writing the report. Unfortunately, we have time with the development of the state budget, so that's going to move on to go on the back burner, so we do want to space a report by March. There is not a $5 million grant, there's a possibility that they will fund their recommendations if you accept that.
Right.
It could be warrants. Not necessarily grants.
It could be warrants. Which, you know. Okay, this other question was about the budget we're on target?
Yes, I did a budget review the first week of January, and we've spent just about 50% of the budget, which is through the six months, or half a year, so we are right on target.
Can this information be shared with the public? Yeah, the status, like where we are.
Yeah, there's many departments, we have, we're just about at 50%, when we get to the full control of this.
Just relating to that, Section 20 of the Charter says, it'll be due to a city manager to communicate to the council soon after the first of each year is practical, complete report on the finances and administrative activities of the city for the preceding year. Are we going to be getting that?
Yes.
Because we didn't get from last year, I'm just wondering if one we might see this year.
My name is Juan.
Okay. And then just one other thing, sort of related, Joe J. was nerding out on some of this stuff. It also requires the court of the city control to provide monthly statements of the financial condition of the city to the council. We also haven't been getting those. Can we start getting those?
No work on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morando, can you speak to the lifeguard headquarters and the sewer collapse on Riverside? Thank you.
For the lifeguard quarters, that probably will not get done this summer. We'll know the bathrooms in Neptune and New York, because the Army Corps project has slowed down a lot. They will be building the crossovers during the course of the winter. We hope those will be in first, in Neptune and New York, once they're in, and we get approval from the state to proceed with the building of bathrooms and move out of it. So likely not going to see them this summer, but I would be hopeful that we see them before the following year. As far as the sewer main collapse on Riverside, we had got approval to do a cure-in-place lining. When you do a cure-in-place lining, the first thing you have to do is clean the line out, go in and TV the line. We started to go in to clean the line out, and we've experienced several major breaks in the line. We did replace a short section so that we could try to get the camera in, we bet it about 35 feet, and we found another major collapse. So presently, the Department of Public Works has put together a bid to do open trench cut replacement. There is a 48-inch drain next to this sewer main, which would make it quite expensive. So we're going to move this outside of the drain line, run a manhole to the west, and we're going to run line parallel to the 48-inch drain, so we don't do any damage to the drain pipe. This should reduce the cost of replacing this. We do have about $400,000 in sewer replacement budget that was approved this year. In addition, we just realized the savings of about $90,000 on the West Market job that we can apply to this. So this job is probably going to be somewhere in the $400,000 to $500,000 range now.
And in terms of the lifeguard headquarters, we're going to just get a trailer again for them this season?
Yeah, we'll have to do the trailer, trail and TV industry. But we do have a really exciting design on the lifeguard headquarters, and I think we've made it a lot more attractive, so.
I know, I know. Thank you. Mr. John McNally.
Good evening. Good evening, John McNally, 613 West Wall Street. Congrats again, Inissa.
Congratulations to you, and your family visiting.
I was originally really skeptical about the new format, or the re-envisioned, or would have corrected format for Good and Wealth there, but since we seem to be making good on answering questions, either at the meeting itself or the subsequent meeting, I think it's a real opportunity to clear the air, relieve some of the frustration that even we on the other side of the podium have had in not getting answers, you know, questions. So if this is a process mechanism for them, that's great. Along those lines, I'm going to ask for a couple of updates, and go through a sort of raised heads of questions that, to my knowledge, have not been answered to date. So similar to what you just did, I had Financial Restructuring Board on there, you gave an update on that. Could you also give an update on where we are with New York State Controller audit? Also, has anyone looked into the allegations of due time that were repeatedly brought up, and whether or not that is legal or not for the exempts? If so, if yes, not, what's the outcome of that been? Has the administration made a determination on whether or not the questionable payouts were proper or not, and what those limits and percentages were? If they have or haven't, has the council then provided, I'm sorry, so what's the outcome of that? Has the council then provided with a copy of Corporation Council, I guess DC's employment contract that's requested by council, and then? Does the council and/or Corporation Council acknowledge that the caucus meetings held between 2012 and 2018, where all council members were of the same party, were in fact a violation of open meeting laws? Similarly, or is there a reaction to that? Does the council have any intentions of conducting open working meetings, as is common amongst most other elected bodies, so that the public is afforded an opportunity to observe its deliberative process? Similarly, if you guys aren't holding such meetings now, I think it helps us get along, move the ball along a little bit better, and, you know, have a little bit more of a mission behind, would have seemed to be something of a restless direction of the ship this year. Did anyone follow up on the allegations that were made over the last couple of meetings of DOT violations? What was the outcome of that? Do we have an update on the search for a city manager? Is the council in agreement to decouple public hearings from votes, so we don't have quite the same contentious in the board as on spot, as I've asked several times? This is one of today's questions, so how many people did actually read their taxes with the city today? And then a little editorial on my part, the city's social media has sort of fallen over itself, rightfully so, to say that they won a case against I-STAR. I'd love to see Jim Kirkland and others that were involved in the Kirkland proceeding get or divest citation of some sort for queuing that up and making a comment.
So we'll try and answer some of that stuff, but the one exception I would have to take is the restless ship. I think Commissioner Tagney has done an outstanding job this year, and has gone over and above, so I take exception to you saying it is a restless ship. Mr. Ron Pagani.
You're going to answer anything else? You're going to answer anything?
One second, Ron, if you please.
There was a lot of questions there, so Mr. Pagani, if you want to just sit down, we'll try and answer some of these.
The control of it is in full swing. They, again, are similar to what the state asked, sense of all the information up to them. In addition, as far as due time, I don't know anything about due time, I don't, I've never used due time, I've never approved due time. And as far as the payouts go, we're waiting for the district attorney's office to do an investigation, as well as the county, the state controller. So when we hear back from them, and they have a investigation to close, or the recommendation they make, we'll be going along with that. I said repeatedly, we searched the city manager's office, and the Corporation Council's office, but it's that Agostese that part two is not in this building. As far as the DOT violations that were alleged at the last meeting, there were some very minor violations. They all, 90, over 90% of them dealt with drivers reporting and not safety of buses. No buses were taken out of service at any time in both the 2011 and the current audit. And as far as the city manager's search, there was a company that was, made a proposal, and there is a questionnaire of the requirements, and the council is now working on getting those together.
Thank you. And in terms of the open meeting law, you said something about 2012 to 2018 violating. It's not a violation if everyone is on the same party.
No, it is a violation if everybody is. Absolutely not.
You don't know what you're talking about, you should probably step down.
No, I'm sorry, no, no. I thought you meant something else, okay. Okay. Mr. Tagney.
Ron Pagani, Long Beach. There's the rainy news on the out-of-control, 48, rainy news on it. You know what's going on? No.
Please finish your time.
All right. In order, in order to reassure the head of the city council, Mr. Ramo, that I am no threat to him or anyone in this room at any time, I will promise not to show my frustration that loud anymore, even though your take on the incident was not truly correct. All right, let's get back to the city garage, the out-of-control boss. What I list next reflects on Mr. Robinson, the assistant city manager's incompetence and his ability to discipline his insubordinate out-of-control boss of the garage. Number one, right now, main entrance garage door, the city garage broke for a month. Can't get in, can't get out. Fix it. Two, city property cameras were ripped down and destroyed by force of garage. That's an old thing. Nobody cares, anyway. Loan engines on new vehicles due to no maintenance, heavy cost to the city. Sanitation fleet of trucks totally destroyed. Still, still, still down six trucks out of 12, sending out to private shops from six. Lots of money. Fire trucks still being sent to private shops, lots of money. City garage shut down for 2018, six weeks, due to fleet infestation. Did you know that? Lots of money to exterminate. Also, fell way behind in the work. Retired ex-boss, Mr. Ritter, brought back to manage shop, cost $38,000. Mr. Ritter gets sick, and all the well-seasoned they can takes over for Ritter. Is there now managing and fixing for out-of-control, I mean, for out-of-title pay? More money, okay? Other outside shops bringing equipment to private shops. More money. Buses constantly breaking down, not passing inspections. That's a safety thing. Okay, eleven, no working money machines for six years in the buses. Mr. Robinson had canceled a standing order in 2012 for new machines, okay? Still no machines now, five years. Money lost, I figured about $5,000 a shift, which are really low, and I calculated for six years. Mr. Robinson causes $101,400, and I'm low on that, because we can't calculate when people put the money in the machine, it just goes right through. Okay, why, how was the question by, I don't know. All right, let's get to the 12, last one. The out-of-control boss who only does a small amount of paperwork with his part-time secretary girlfriend, who neither have signed in and out for five years, who blew the payroll for the shop, could be charged with theft of service.
Thank you, Mr. Pagani.
No contest, city has very strict policy, Mr. Agostese, on signing in and signing out.
Thank you.
The union warned him many times on the issue, stating that if he doesn't sign in, he's terminated.
Your time is up.
He's terminated. One second. We hired two mechanics.
Your time is up, sir.
All right, I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, I hope you get back to me on this.
We will look into it.
You said Mr. Ramo, you would.
I said we will look into it, I did.
All right.
And the one thing I do know is the buses have not failed inspection.
They did fail.
They have not.
Yes, they did.
Mr. Phil Schwartz.
No.
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up. Our buses have not failed inspection.
Why do you get such work?
Because your time is up, I'm sorry. Good evening.
Good evening, Phil Schwartz, Long Beach. Congratulations, Councilwoman Moore, I look forward to reading your report.
Thank you.
Now, the meetings have been getting a lot better since City Council President Aramo had stated what meeting is supposed to tempo and the abuse, and I think that's very helpful. Now, Councilman Vendo, I think that the problem is math. There are five council people. That's four and one. Four are Democrat, and you are not. And so for the vote, you vote, you have the right to vote. I don't know why we have a problem with the city council manager vote. I blame you.
There's no problem, Mr. Schwartz. There's no problem, Mr. Schles.
Okay. Okay. Please, direct your.
I'll come across the whole, the whole lot, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm glad it's not a problem, I would like to see results at the next meeting, so that's one thing. Now, I can't agree with her. She criticized and said that our president should resign.
My name is Allison Blanchett.
Okay, Allison Blanchett. I think that, I think that the lady president of the United States, that's a different issue.
Well, he's a Democrat.
Seriously, she, I believe, lost an election. Okay? And she got very few votes, so her coming here, and we're supposed to think positive, we're supposed to get something going this year, and I, I hope we do, because that's what we're here for, we're here for the people. And I, I think our city manager did a great job, and I hope that issue works out. We'll have a police commissioner too, and I do have more stuff to say, but due lack of time and lack of respect, and that's what President Ramo was trying to get across. Give people respect who come here and stand, who pay taxes and would like the city to go in a different direction than criticizing, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schles. Mr. Dean.
Please, everyone, please, hold on, Mr. Bureau.
Yeah, just give me one more. Regarding the city manager's search, I don't think there was, because it was asked twice. The acting city manager gave an answer, but let me just clarify, so just please. The city is bringing in an executive search firm that specializes in finding municipal leaders. I believe they're on the contract now.
I don't know yet.
Oh, okay. The contract was already last one, what's?
I have to send the contract, assigned, executed contract along with the grant.
Okay, well, anyway, we're bringing in an executive search firm that laid out a very detailed timeline and process for how they will help us find the city manager. It will be a very structured process that should yield some very good results in a very defined time. Regarding the Corporation Council's separation agreement, I got in touch with the governor's, the state comptroller's office, and they informed me that the city did in fact provide a copy of that agreement, so I'm not sure where I'm not getting accurate information from, whether it's coming from the city or from the office of the state comptroller. And then finally, regarding, there was a comment, I guess, about open meeting laws, and I just may as well say now, this is something a couple of council members have been talking about. Councilwoman Moore and I, we're going to start holding open meetings to discuss some city business, of course, we're going to invite the other council members to participate. It'll be their decision if they want to do that, so just keep an eye open for, maybe on Facebook, for the announcements of when we'll start those, those meetings, so we can interact with the public.
Mr. Allen Tapper? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Steve Bureau. Uh, well, there's a number of questions that everyone's asked, can I ask, such as the city manager, comptroller, partners, or firm, which I see as if there is, at least there's some progress being made in the military law. So, just some additional questions. Why won't applications for new boards and commissions for 2019 happen? I think that they, looking at some of those boards and commissions, they should be open to the public, they should not be necessarily straight up a coin of these, and maybe it's time for a little bit of unanimism, a little bit of change, a little bit of budget. The question on, I know it's come up previously, as far as the presidency and change, and what changed to the presidency has been, well, it's been in the past, there's no changes, no change, but that should be answered once and for all, because the question's been asked all the time. Separation days, comptroller, comptroller, investigation, all of that, again. There was also recently some boil requests made regarding take-home cars in the city to meet. I find this, something comes out of corporate America where we add police, cars, that is something that should be tracked, we should know where, who has, how they're being used, et cetera. So when somebody boiled it, well, not me, but when it wasn't boiled, we should definitely have an idea of who's driving what, where, how much, and how much it's costing us, and if it's necessary, and why are we driving the SUV versus smart cars these days, just as well. The last thing I want to talk about is we had, there's a loss in the community, yes, recently. Her name was Kathy Thorne. Those people who have been in City Hall for many years will know that Kathy Thorne started her job here at 18 years old. Her service was held recently this past weekend. She was a city employee, she ran the tax department for probably close to 40 years. My mother made a call this past week to the city, tried to get, I'm sorry to have me, but tried to get in touch with you. She called the main number, she called the police department, and she called four or five times. As I was standing there, I never witnessed the response on the telephones from the people that answer the phones in this, whether it's here or in the police department. My father was a retired cop for 20, almost 25 years. I've never seen an elderly woman spoken to the way she was, and if she wasn't spoken to, she was hung up on. I reached out, I asked her to hang up the phone. I think it's important that you notice, because this is what we're presenting to this residence. I called, I got your, I got transferred, I got transferred to your office, to somebody who works in your office. Everything she was going to talk to you, she was going to get back to me, that never happened. Her, her, her funeral mass is happening, but I think it was very terrible that she was not acknowledged, nor was the flag flown at half-mast in her name. So I would like to think that in the future, when you, when you, when we reach out to our public, our elected officials, that they are not treated, the residents are not spoken to, regardless of that matter, and I think the city should do something to acknowledge Kathy Thorne's passing.
Thank you.
I think you're telling that, and you're telling that, you worked for Kathy Thorne, but I left a message on your cell phone.
I'll show you my phone. I'll show you my phone, so I don't know what number it is, I may have.
And the only one that can authorize the law, you play, is the President or Governor.
Thank you, Mr. Bureau.
The President, the President. I believe you're Paul P.
Yes. Ms. Marilyn Tapper.
I have something to give out to the. And Happy New Year. Senator Reynolds had a version or a vision for Long Beach. I thought that Long Beach had something special, so he built a home with Spanish tile roofs and built various style homes here. Now I have a vision. I think that Long Beach is something special. It has the Atlantic Ocean, the sea breezes, is thought by many as the healthiest city. I was asked by the city council in 1996, my thoughts about the super block, and I told them that this would make a great spa town. There is a spa town in Europe, it's known as Baden-Baden. There is no reason why Long Beach couldn't be known as a spa town of America. I am handing out some information to you about Baden-Baden. I would suggest that this board look into feasibility of doing this. Years ago, I remember a large salt waterfall at the oceanfront. A gentleman who built Grenadiers Towers built it because his wife suffered from asthma, so he built the house so that he would, she would have a place to enjoy her last years. Think about what makes this into a spa town. It would do an unbelievable thing for this town, for the people who live here. This would be special, because Long Beach is special.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this information.
I'm happy to look at what I've given you, and we would like some input to get back from you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tapper. That's it for this evening. I'd like to thank everyone for being here, participating, and get home safely. Thank you.